How do I do that?
Okay, like to call to order this Board of Education meeting. Third of eight high school. Our third base school district, would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Mr. Means, could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Meyer. Here. Commissioner Hawes here. Commissioner Chisholm here. Commissioner Jenner John here. Commissioner Stefani.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz is excused. Commissioner Howard is not here. Commissioner Scholz.
Here.
And Commissioner Spreck.
Here. Excellent. Thank you very much. Could I get a motion to adopt the general agenda with one change? We are going to move point. Number five, which is second reading of Title IX policy from the consent agenda to. Uh, our placeholder, if there is any, can be moved to operations, which is placeholder number one. Make so that that difference. So if I could have a moment to accept. Or excuse me, to adopt the agenda with that. So moved change.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda, knowing that we will be moving. Point number five, second reading of Title IX policy from the consent agenda item. To the open operations agenda item number one.
Perfect.
All right. Um, we have a motion. Uh, from Commissioner Schultz to move, excuse me, to it's to adopt the agenda. Uh, understanding that consent agenda item number five will be moved to operations agenda number point one. We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Oh, opposed. Motion carry. So next, the public comment section, I've not seen anyone here for the public comment section. So I think we can move on to the next. The next uh, area, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda. Consists of the following. Approve the minutes from the regular meeting of July seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Approve the July bills that are in all of your packets. Uh, accept the grants and donations, which are as follows. Twenty-two dollars and forty cents from Chuck Schumer for the Clipper plays. Elementary playground, uh, received one thousand dollars from the Ellsworth and Carla Peterson. Uh, and a thousand dollars from the Healthy Way Market. Uh, thanks to these groups and individuals for their generosity. Also, we have uh. Resignations. Emily Orange is resigning from her OZ advisor service learning coordinator and high school health and wellness physician. Uh, Kayla Durber is resigning from her associate position in the Safe Harbor Room. And Amber Peters is resigning from her sixth grade science teaching position. We thank these individuals for their service. And wish them well in their next adventures. Um, so could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hawes, second by Commissioner Chisholm to approve the consent agenda. As presented. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. Now we are to the operations agenda point one, which is uh, following up on the second reading Title IX policy.
Yeah, so we have, uh, we held a discussion or we held first reading, pardon me, not discussion last month. Uh, some of us are more familiar perhaps than others, but the board as a whole is familiar that this has been working its way through. While the new federal guidelines were supposed to be in place August first. Uh, President Stefani and I agreed that, well, if the board typically holds. And our policy really doesn't talk about two readings. It talks about considering a policy update or change in consecutive months. We thought, well, something this important that's likely going to get more and more attention, as I think we're all seeing already. Probably shouldn't be rushed in one reading, only in the July meeting, but should stay on schedule at the very least for July and August. Knowing a couple of pieces. If something were brought to the attention of the district, right, brought to one of us as administrators, whether Lindsey, myself, or a principal, wherever it happens to start. If it was prior to August first, it's really under the the previous policy that we've had. Which is really the two thousand twenty-one guidelines, if I'm keeping my numbers straight. If it's something that's more recent, looking ahead. Then it's a situation where it would be under the quote-unquote new new guidance, which led to this particular policy that we now see reading number two of. If it's a situation, well, there were some things that happened before August first and some things since. Basically, uh, what we've read, whether from Neola or some of the attorney stuff we've read, looking into this on our behalf. You basically agree on a hybrid of sorts of the two policies to do your best to look into the situation and follow up as appropriate. I think, as Lindsey did a nice job of attending uh, this training at CISA on behalf of our district and reporting back to the admin team. Really, I I think we know, uh, you know, topic specific too, and you can read all the information on it, on, you know, as far as gender identity. Uh, really, there's a couple of different components to that that have become kind of the lightning rod at least for some folks. Uh, when it comes to this particular topic. I guess what's nice to clarify for folks, regardless of their opinions on the most recent. Uh, Title IX regs or some of the politics behind this. Is that we have had a policy on Title IX before where there's a protocol of someone has a concern how we look into it. The new one has that. Obviously, this is more involved with the new regulations. And in addition to the previous kind of list of protected classes, right, there's more information around gender identity. So. A little bit of context for us, again, board members are aware, but for someone who might watch this recording. It's passionate about the topic, you know, there are some of the just basic. Uh, kind of factual things we can have. So I know a board member had asked a question. Is it appropriate, President Stefani? Maybe we. Turn it over to uh, Commissioner Schultz for any questions, comments, as far as where we want to go with the discussion next.
Well, I guess the question I have is um. We were shared an email uh, recently this week about. And updates.
Not to cut you off, but maybe if someone's watching, let's declare five B, the email that I shared with the board, right, that I received from Neola, right? This is where I'll talk to the same one.
Yes. So it said, it states in there that um, the state of Wisconsin. Uh, basically no longer have the the document title, but. Twenty twenty-one Title IX guidance documents. Essentially referencing twenty twenty-one USD OP, US Department of Education guidance documents. Is no longer has legal effect pertaining to several states, including Wisconsin. Now, what does that mean in terms of? What we're. Doing or proving tonight related to Title IX and the twenty twenty-four. Is there reference to the twenty twenty-one Title IX document, or is it just? A flat out, we just. We're turning the page and now it's time for new. What is that? What is that? What is that? Judgment made?
Good question. My understanding, and for anyone who might track this. What I did is I copied and pasted the email into my updated report. So again, board members know, right, I sent to all district staff my report. Um, the first I was saying to the admin team, you know, was it three or four paragraphs? I just counted the first update I got in June was actually six paragraphs. Although two of the paragraphs were only one sentence long, right? So the English teacher in me said, is that about a four paragraph message versus this one, which when I copy and paste it in Word? Not big font, is six pages. So as Jake's asking the question, well, what does some of this mean, right? It's a little hard to track. So it's roughly two, a page and a half to two pages in as I copy and paste it in my report. My understanding is that is specific to the two thousand and twenty-one guidance, uh, since that's a short paragraph in bold. In essence, that that note that follows that Jake's referring to. And then I'm going to jump us ahead, whether you're looking at the end of the email or a person ends up reading it from my report. I'll jump ahead to the last, basically, I'm going to call it two paragraphs from that same message. Uh, where it's talking about um. Really, a couple of different things. The first of these last two paragraphs talks about how in essence, I'll just paraphrase and not bore people to tears. That even if. This uh, guidance weren't in place in a particular district. An individual or family, and it gives the example, right? I think Neola is pretty much saying what everyone knows, right? Regardless of any court decision based on the gender identity language, right, or any of those injunctions. The reality is there's a private cause of action that an individual could bring forth a concern that concludes at the end. And then back to Jake's question, the very last paragraph. I will just read since it's only, I think, two sentences. Neola's recommendation for legal counsel to Wisconsin School District clients is to note that Title IX regulations. Remain the law in Wisconsin and therefore the requirement to adopt the policy revisions. Again, in parentheses, it just mentions going back to the Neola June special update, continue to be the law as well. As is always the case, whether or not to adopt any policy is the decision of a school board, whether to adopt the proposed policy if the board decision that we made a consultation with districts. Legal, they have a type of council, which again, we've done. So the reality is back to that first sentence, it's still the law in Wisconsin regardless of some of those court cases. And knowing full well, there are people on. I'd say both sides, there's probably more than two sides of the Title IX article. So. Back to your question, Jake, I would say that note deals with twenty twenty-one, which is looking back. This policy deals with the twenty twenty-four guidance, looking forward, is my current understanding.
And we would be approving. The legal recommendation. From kind of our legal, this is more for people at home.
But Neola is our.
I can take that. Yeah, Neola is the the entity, and again, board knows this, but that we contract with for board policy guidance. Separate from that. Mary Gurbig is an attorney we've used. She's been with a couple of different firms. We've used her for a variety of things over the years. It was her firm that Ann and I reached out to early on and Mary, and one of her staff members wrote us the memo that went with. Theoretically, yes. Now, as Jake lined up. We know there are certain numbers of funds, federal funds that the district gets, right? School districts in the state of Wisconsin, right? The majority of our funding does not come from the federal government, but. Typically, we don't want to turn away funding. I think aside from that, back to your. Observation or summary, I think the question is, does it further open up the district? If they don't, you know, adopt the policy as they're supposed to. One could argue if the Department of Education has other things. To worry about or not versus that, and that a family or an individual could bring forth a concern with or without said policy. I think probably people could debate that. So I think administratively, right, we're under, okay, we got the legal guidance. Neola, who we contract with, has recommended. Pass an updated policy, knowing, okay, you know, every year there are certain policies that get revised. I'm thinking regardless of the outcome of the fall election, there'll be anywhere from small revisions to this. Or theoretically, potentially sweeping revisions to it, uh, depending what the coming months. Right?
And we've seen revisions. I mean, this board member hasn't been on. I mean, there's been revisions to this. Virtually every year or every few years.
Certain things around aspects of harassment discrimination, right?
Right.
Some of those that show up in different, some of them are more employee policies. This one obviously is taking more into account on the kind of the student family side. Uh, but yeah, there are certain ones that are revised. I'll say almost every year, maybe not every.
Like language, language is revised.
What I think, this one from just taking any of the other stuff out of it, I think from a strictly, you know, administrative. Uh, view of it, right, as in my case, the school board's employee, right, as Lindsey did a great job summarizing things for us. It's just, you know. We're up to, what is it, thirty-one different forms that will be, that will be a part of if something really turns into a true Title IX. Complaint that rises to the level of requiring an investigation, is that a decent way of wording that? That, you know, there's all, you know, these uh, checkboxes forms that go beyond even what the previous would have had. And even some of the the pieces of when a principal naturally looks into something. Right, the principal kind of has to wait a little bit, even though naturally principals normally want to work with the students, parents and teachers right away. Because Lindsey has to do a piece and, you know, there's all this other stuff to it. So.
And then then just a question I have on that, then. Have all our administrative staff been trained on that so they know what?
September twenty fifth.
Okay. All right, so we have something in place that we are going to be doing then. And that's just for protection of everybody who are doing the right thing.
I believe that's called what? An investigation training or something?
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Hey, you can pop up quick, yeah. Some of it even deals with, uh, like our coaches. Who aren't staff members already receiving training, right, rather than expecting someone like Lindsey to have, oh, great, now on top of it, she needs to go to a fall, winter and spring coaches meeting. We've talked about. If she does a little video, then John Dupuy, our athletic director, can make sure people watch that, and that at least checks some of the Title IX stuff. What would you add to that, Lindsey?
Yes, I think the main thing is, is um, as the Title IX coordinator, which would be my title. I oversee all of the training in the district, so any employee that comes in has to be trained. And so we've done a couple of things in terms of vector training. I'll have to speak in front of staff, um, not give them the entire presentation, but here's what you do if there is a complaint. Really, the biggest difference between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four is that, um, before we had to wait for our formal complaint to be filed. Now we don't. Now that there is even a presumption of something occurring under Title IX, we as a district have to do due diligence to dig into it ourselves. I have to do due diligence to dig into it myself. Um, and then it goes to investigations, uh, which all the building principles will do, which they'll get trained on specifics of that at the end of September. Um, and then it kind of goes back and forth between decision makers, appeals and things. Um, I think we wrote in the policy a thirty business day length of time from beginning to end. And during that time, there are thirty-one legal notices that have to be sent. To parents and to participants in that um, investigation. So it's pretty um. It's pretty intense. Yeah.
From our kind of administrative realm, have we seen anything else that looks? As involved as an investigation process through the new guidance? And bearing in mind you deal with IP.
I was gonna say, yes. Um, it reminds me a lot of what, you know, we do in terms of manifestation determinations, if there's a OCR, um, Office of Civil Rights complaint, if there's a DPI complaint, they're both very similar to this process. Um, in terms of legal notices, timelines, how we communicate, who gets to communicate documentation and so forth. So, um, it mirrors a lot of, um. The work that I do on the backend anyway.
So a lot of this is like legal means, right? Does she have someone that can support her in that process?
We built in some of the options in here, not only that she can and would consult with the person in my position. But that, you know, she doesn't need to wait for the person in my position to give her the green light to reach out to legal counsel. Right, and we can have not only legal counsel, and honestly, as an aside, where is some of this, right? There's a lot of. Time, energy, consternation and money being spent on this, aside from the different belief for political pieces. Uh, that she can reach out to legal counsel at any point, not only to advise, but there's a way we can have legal counsel, like be involved in the investigation as well, which. We could do under certain other things before anyway. But yeah, you have the ability just to kick that in.
Yeah.
Because I I get, yeah, you can follow a policy like anyone else can, professionals, but at some point, it's like. How do I, who who do I talk to to substantiate or not substantiate or whatever it might be?
Right.
Right, and. To support the person we've named. In our policy. So I was curious.
I mean, I came back from the training, um, it was Thursday, Friday, I came back on Monday and said, Dan. Here's what we're gonna do. I may want to purchase all the thirty-one forms, please don't make me ask, please don't ask me to make them all myself. He said, yes, go do what you need to. So yes, I mean, I'm working with a law firm to get those thirty-one forms.
Good.
Um, and then we'll have further training and myself will, um, on how to actually go through this entire process. The good news is that I think. Right, it's it's new, it's hot topics, it's, you know, a hot button thing, but we've been doing this work forever, right? And now it's under this umbrella that's kind of catching, you know, some media attention. Um, it's just how we go about the process from beginning to end. It's just a little bit more scrutinized now, I would say, in terms of documentation and what we need to show. Um, but the work we do really is in changing. Um, we're providing equitable access to education for all, and that's really what Title IX is about.
One last thing I could think of at the moment that Lindsey and I have talked about too, and I shared with the team. Like, we're looking at two different legal firms, not only because then we have perspectives. But if we could get in a situation in the future that's pretty involved, and one legal firm maybe needs to take one role, we have another legal firm that can take another role for us. So. Uh, a tollist, basically Chrissy Hamel, who's talked to our superintendent group quite a bit in the last couple of years, is the one. Who was real involved with the training, both Lindsey and I find her to be, uh, you know, very professional, very good. And so really, that's the firm we're looking to get that suite of forms from. I met another one of their attorneys who was a former superintendent this summer at Stone Harbor at one of our conferences. So I think. They will provide good support to us. And then at the same time, still someone like a Mary Gerbey, who we've used on different things, including background for this, right? Will still utilize her services in certain ways, but then we're not getting into only one perspective down the road either. So we think it's a wide, okay.
Thank you. I hope we never have to use it.
Yeah, ideally.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time to do the training and.
My pleasure.
Do we have further discussion on this? Then I think at this point, uh, we are looking to, uh, motion to. To approve. The what's what we have.
The second reading.
You know, approve that, uh.
A motion to second, for the second reading.
Yeah, a motion to the second, to approve the second reading of Title IX.
Move to approve the second reading of the Title IX.
Okay. Um, I have a motion by Commissioner Hawes, second by by Commissioner Chisholm to approve the second reading of Title IX policy. As presented. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Now we're down to approve a sixth grade science teacher. Kylie Niasse.
Yes, Principal Smullen recommends Kylie Niasse for the sixth grade science teaching position. Actually, recall, we had a. A resignation during the month of July. Kylie graduated from UW Stevens Point twenty twenty-four with teaching degree in early childhood and elementary ed. Miss Niasse is from Forestville and attended Southern Door School District. She loves hiking, is a huge baseball fan, especially following Colberg in the county league ball, for those of you that watch that. Miss Niasse looks forward to building relationships with her peers and getting her tier teaching career started here. At our school district. Motion to approve Kylie Niasse as a sixth grade science teacher beginning with the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year is requested.
I make a motion to approve Kylie Niasse as a sixth grade science teacher, getting with the twenty twenty-four, twenty times.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jenner John, second by Commissioner Hawes to approve Kylie Niasse as a sixth grade science teacher beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. Uh, now we're down to approving some teacher associates. First is Kathleen Reiman.
Yes, as the board knows, we often see this in August, we have three teacher associate positions with recommendations for tonight. Uh, Principal Katie Villers is pleased to recommend Kathleen Reiman for a four K teacher associate position at Sawyer Elementary, starting with this coming school year. Kathleen has a bachelor's degree in special education. She's worked as a special ed teacher in both Southern Door and Two Rivers. Currently, she's a program manager and works with special needs clients on creating and implementing personal care plans. Kathleen is also active in Girl Scouts of Wisconsin as a membership and outreach program director. Kathleen's work demonstrates, uh, experience, excuse me, demonstrates great passion for serving others. This will serve her well in her new role, supporting our district's youngest learners at Sawyer. We're looking forward to Kathleen joining the team at Sawyer and congratulate her. A motion to approve Kathleen Reimer as a four K teacher associate at Sawyer Elementary School, beginning with the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year is recommended.
Move to approve Kathleen Reimer as a four K teacher associate at Sawyer Elementary, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year.
All right, we have a a motion by Commissioner Schultz, second by Commissioner Jenner John to approve Kathleen Reimer as a four K teacher associate at Sawyer Elementary School, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. Now we're at at the second.
Hey, Adriana Durst. Um, Director of Special Education, People's Services, Lindsey Ferry and Middle School Principal Mark Smullen are pleased to recommend Hey, Adriana Durst for the special ed teacher associate position at TJ Walker Middle School. Hey, Adriana will be earning her associate's degree from NWTC in special education this coming December. And is eager to bring her classroom learning into practice. Adriana has been employed at half the last two years where she worked with students with disabilities. Adriana is patient, compassionate and energetic about students and will not be a great addition to the team at TJ Walker Middle School. A motion to approve Adriana Durst as a special education teacher associate beginning with the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year is recommended.
Move to approve Adriana Durst as a special education teacher associate with the beginning twenty twenty-four and twenty-five school year. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sprek, second by Commissioner Schultz to approve Tadriana Dursa as the special education teacher associate beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. Now we're to the third.
Director of Special Education, People's Services, Lindsey Ferry and Principal Mark Smullen, once again, are calling Kaylee. Motion to approve Kaylee Torbeck as special education teacher associate beginning with the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year is recommended.
Move to approve Kaylee Torbeck as special education teacher associate beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Move to approve Kaylee Torbeck as special education teacher associate, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Haas, second by Commissioner, I heard, uh, Mr. Spricka first, so. We're gonna, we're gonna give that to him. He slid into home plate. This motion is to approve Kelly Torrick as the special education teacher associate, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No. No.
No. Okay. We have, uh. We have one opposed and. The rest.
Aye.
So motion does carry. Next, next, we have approved high school coaching positions.
Yes, we have, I think, two, yeah, two high school coaching positions and the next agenda item, a couple of middle school. Uh, so we have a head softball coach position, a name that would be familiar to most of you. So, um, Haley Benish for head softball coaching position is recommended by Athletic Director John Dupuy. Haley's been playing softball since she can hit the ball off the tee. Haley played at various little league teams while in elementary, middle school. And four years here at Sturgeon Bay High School. During high school summers, Haley played for travel teams such as the Green Bay Express and Wisconsin Wildfire. Haley continued her playing career after college at the College of DuPage in Illinois for a semester. Haley's dad, of course, Jim Benish, was softball coach here at Sturgeon Bay High School for thirty years. Haley was a volunteer assistant coach for the twenty twenty-four season here at Sturgeon Bay High School. A motion to approve Haley Benish as a head softball coach, beginning with the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year is recommended.
Move to approve Haley Benish as the head softball coach, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
All right, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Sprica, second by Commissioner Chisholm to, uh, approve. Haley Benish as the head softball coach, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. Uh, now we're down to the high school assistant football.
Yes, C C Athletic Director John Dupuy recommending Jacob Ewing as an assistant football coach. We don't already know when you see half contracts, so often we have more assistant coaches than contracts, and they often split or share some of those. Coaching staff. So nothing out of the ordinary at that cardiac guard. Uh, you see the description here, sir, his nine-year football career in third grade with tackle football. At high school, a four-year starter playing center for two years and defensive tackle for two, offensive tackle for two years and defensive end for two years. In the senior year is a major turnaround for a school's program, um, breaking a twenty-six game losing streak. And then they went on the next season. To have a playoff berth. After high school, Jacob played for a year as defensive end at the D three college level before a career-ending shoulder injury, unfortunate. Outside of football, Jacob has been an assistant for our Sturgeon Bay High School, right? Our connection with Sebastopol as well, wrestling, coaching staff. Motion to approve Jacob Ewing as an assistant football coach, beginning with the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year is recommended.
Move to approve Jacob Ewing. I'm gonna stay with, but.
Right.
Sorry.
He won't make the move.
I'm looking to approve Jacob Ewing as an assistant football coach, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Second.
Second was. Okay. Um. We have a motion by Commissioner Chisholm, second by Commissioner Haas to approve Jacob Ewing. As an assistant football coach, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Um, further discussion? I support the higher, but I'll abstain from the vote. Okay. Um. So any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And, uh, no, no, one abstention, right?
I'll pop to the next agenda item. We had two listed, really only one recommendation for you tonight with this first one, five A middle school football. Athletic Director John Dupuy recommended Kyle Pluer as our middle school football coach. Uh, the description, Kyle was a multi-sport athlete growing up through high school, participating in football, basketball and baseball. Participated for fifteen years in the Door County Baseball League, including coaching for four years in the league. He's also helped at various sports camps over the years. To approve Kyle Pluer as middle school football coach, beginning with the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year is recommended.
I'm like, I should to approve Kyle for as middle school football coach, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Second. Right? Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Jenner John, second by Commissioner Spricka to approve Kyle Pluer as a middle school. Football coach, beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, motion carried. Now we're to the middle school volleyball coach.
We do not have a recommendation at this time, we, we still have a vacancy there, so we.
Just on to the next.
Yes, was checking.
Yep.
No.
Uh, approved strategic action plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, again, the board has seen, it sees this each year. I'll summarize again mainly for the benefit of anyone in the public, right? So we have history going back to twenty seventeen about these three particular areas. As I was explaining in this very room to our new teachers in a little time I had with them yesterday. Uh, we have this mechanism to make sure we all kind of stay on point and everyone. From our employees up to the board knows what the top priorities are, and we don't chase a bunch of new and different initiatives throughout the year. Getting people distracted and confused, et cetera. So we know we have those areas, right? Teaching and learning, community engagement, and then kind of finance facilities, operations piece. Uh, what you see within there for the most part is quite consistent what you've seen in recent years. I'll draw your attention to the beginning of the teaching and learning piece. You know, you've heard a lot about literacy work and literacy growth. And what we did when the team talked about this, especially again in June, after kind of talking about it this past school year, is incorporating both literacy and math. As priority areas. So the literacy work, right? The great work our teachers at various levels, certainly elementary folks have gone through the most training. That great work will continue. So we're not like giving up on that or stopping with it per se. But seeing a little more of a focus, kind of returning, uh, to some of the math work. So there are some things that occurred already last school year with the math coach coming in and getting a baseline. But you'll hear throughout the year, not only about literacy, but math, kind of as well as those kind of top academic areas. Within that, again, more or less focusing on the same main work, community engagement piece, I really hardly, it's. Hardly tweaked the wording there at all. I think just a little bit around newsletter and whatnot, because we know we're partnering with the Pulse now. And then the finance facilities and operations, right? Overall operations that the district continues, or community continues to expect from us. As far as responsible, short, long-term path, planning, attracting, retaining quality staff. That continues, and within that, a little bit in parentheses that I tweaked from a year ago around some of the stuff we actually talked about with Jake during the budget session. And we'll talk more about this year around certain pieces, kind of getting those checked off for the good of, not just the employees in the district for years to come. So really, I certainly can take any questions, as could the team, but I'll jump to the last sentence. I really did a motion to approve the strategic action plan. For two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five is recommended.
I'm with motion to approve a strategic action plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
One second.
All right, we have a motion to approve, uh, excuse me, motion from Commissioner Jenner John, second by Commissioner Haas to approve the. Uh, strategic action plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Uh, further discussion? I will just point one thing out in the discussion that remember, we really, we really. Dig more deeper in this, uh, generally in February when we do our board retreat. So this isn't to say that other things can't be brought up. It's just, it's just, these are our core. Principles that we're.
It helps give us focus in many ways.
Um, so. Any other further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Good, motion carry. And now we're down to the, uh, point number seven, people non-discrimination self-revaluation process update.
Yeah, you've seen this in my reports before, and I had a, a, an agenda item on it last month. No board action is needed per se. Again, it was done historically every five years, as I shared with you during COVID time. This is one of the things that was paused. That's why it's been a while since we had done it last. But in essence, I have a paper copy of the report. Uh, what we're gonna be doing is putting that report on our website here in the next few days, making it available to anyone from the public. And then what I'll be doing probably tomorrow, unless we get distracted with other things with the new teachers and I take care of it another day. I have a form I have to fill out with DPI that just says, yes. The team and I, Anne was a great help as well. We went through, we reviewed some different things to make sure, you know, whether it's. Who's participating in sports, what's happening with scholarships, et cetera, that we're aware of those trends. And, you know, not a situation where we've had a variety of discrimination complaints at all, nothing formal. At the same time, we're paying attention to that. So yeah, the report is done for the public. Kind of giving notice to to anyone who might be watching this. If they're interested, yes, they could contact me, just like we said early in the summer, even though no one did. Um, this is going to be available to the public and I'll take care of that form. That's really the only update I have for you unless someone has a question.
Good. Um. Anyone have a question on that? Then we are now down to reports, which Jake, you know, is kind of covered that. So I think, uh. Dan, yours?
Yeah, as far as the reports list, I don't think we have anything, right? Legislative CISA committees, et cetera, through, from the summer, right? It's all quiet, which is good.
Uh, uh.
What were you gonna answer?
Actually, yeah, there, there is. There is, um, we probably should mention, Dan, since we're all, but we do, we, Dan and I were at the, um. Um. I guess we'll call it a all interested parties for the athletic. Of fields and also possible, you know, whether it's a resource center, field halls, you know, that there's kind of a, a talk amongst. You know, for the county. Uh, of, of, of a possible build. You know, in our area. So there's a lot of discussion for that, you know, you recall. We did, we put money towards a study, you know, a small, a smaller dollar amount. We've also been very hopeful that we're, we're not going to capital referendum. At least I, I don't feel that we're going to capital referendum, because we just passed, you know, several years back, our capital referendum until that's paid off. I don't. I don't know how, how we could. And, and we also have to pass our operations, right? Um, getting back to that core thing we just talked about in the strategic, strategic action plan, if we don't have. Uh, the, the, uh, referendum passed that we need just to do the business. It, some of those things would really suffer. So, but all of that said, that doesn't mean there aren't actors that can come forward. And, and, and really. Do something marvels, right? We've seen it in other, other communities, and I'm not talking just Door County. I'm talking go to West appear. There's a whole. Whole complex there that was, uh, that was put up, that really the school district wasn't, uh. Uh, doing capital referendums for. So anyway, I, it was very, it was, I think it was fruitful. I think there is an actual. Uh, there is not, I think, if there is an actual. Kind of looking at this from a logical standpoint to keep the ball moving. So we do have. Um, uh, Craig Siegel, our staff has been spearheading a lot of things on this as, as is, uh. Uh, so sorry, I had a mental block for a second.
Uh, three different people from down.
Mark Schuster's been involved.
Yes.
And, and many others. So.
Gene Core, Julie LaLazare.
So we did a, we did.
The city.
This was just, was this here, my days were running together? I think it's yesterday.
You and I read it.
Yes, yesterday. And then there was, uh, uh, site visits after that by, by people that may not have been. Uh, as knowledgeable on, on, on kind of like our, our, that whole area, right?
Anticipates a report from the consultant around the end of the calendar year, give or take. Chris, uh, who's the consultant we've dealt with the most, and then gentleman named Darren, we've met online and then was actually in Sturgeon Bay yesterday and today. Um. They've said, you know, that could come up a little earlier or it could bump back a month or two, but. Again, around the end of the calendar year, all the different entities should be seeing some sort of report about possibilities.
Plus, I think the word, one final thing. The, there, there is going to be interviews by these consultants as well with some of the other. Outstanding organizations in, in the community, like the YMCA, the A D R C, um.
Gosh, and there were some session, I think there was a session or two yesterday, some today, I think we're doing another virtual one. Yeah, talking to different folks from the county.
So making sure that all of this is, is a center, it's like, it's like lockstep, it's not this, right? We don't wanna. Create enemies for, for great. Places, right? In order, we want to duplicate things. So anyway, it was a, it was a good, it was a good discussion. Um.
You can all read my report. I noted a couple of things that we've touched on already tonight, so I won't belabor the point because, you know. It's August and we can get out of here before seven o'clock.
That'd be good. So can I have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn. Yeah. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have Commissioner Schultz, second, seconded by Commissioner Jenner John gave a motion to adjourn. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, everybody.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you all.